Good evening. As Vice Chairman of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the March 7th, 2023 special meeting. We have two items on the agenda. The adoption of the 2023 budget, followed by workshop session on multi-tiered system of supports or MTSS. Items 2.1, adoption of the 2023-24 budget. The motion is that the Hartford Board of Education adopt the 2023-24 itemized estimated estimate of expenditures in the amount of $4,229,382 and 300,82852 effective July 1st, 2023. Do I have a motion?
No moves. Kim Oliver.
Second, Francois Starestel Ledger.
All right, it's removed properly. Second, Superintendent.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Welcome. Today, Chief Penn and I will kind of do a quick tag teaming to give you an update of the proposed budget and what has changed in the mitigation since we last met on February 6th. At the end of the short presentation, we'd of course be happy to answer any questions. And this is a visual that we know, given that every time that we're together, we want to anchor the conversations and our work on our priorities. And so a quick, quick visual here, right? We want to continue to revisit the strategic priorities as our budget process will be guided by maintaining fidelity to these priorities and how they have a positive impact on our students and broader community. So I'm going to tag Chief Penn and preface that some of the upcoming slides you've seen before, but it is important that we kind of anchor in this information.
Thanks Superintendent. Good evening, everybody. And as the Superintendent just mentioned, we are going to kind of move kind of quickly through the next few slides as you've seen them before. But they're mostly to help ground and anchor folks that perhaps are seeing this for the first time tonight. So on this slide, as you may recall from when we first put the budget in front of you in January, we were estimating total expenses of just over $440 million for 2023-24. And on that slide, we called out some of the bigger drivers of that change. Most notably, the change in the number of enrolled students at Crec that are Hartford residents and their associated tuition increase on a per student basis. And some of the special education transportation costs that we were seeing, both as key drivers as expenses for 2324. The next slide talks a little bit more about what we were projecting for revenues as we entered the budget process in earnest in January. And as you'll see here, we were forecasting a drop in revenue at that time to just under $417 million, which would have put us down $6 million over a two-year period. So as you may recall, at the time, we said those are two things moving in the opposite directions that we don't want. Expenses going up and our revenues going down. And as we talked about also, on the next slide, just to ground other folks, you know, it's not just the absolute change in our enrollment that affects some of these numbers. It's the mix of enrollment as well. So as we had a lower mix of students from suburban students in our magnet schools, that drove a pretty substantial drop in our revenue as we receive state funding for those suburban students that attend our magnet schools. So when we put all that together, and I know you've seen this next slide before as well, what we were projecting was a an overall deficit of about $24 million at the beginning of January with projected revenues, just as I said, under just under $417 million. Projected expenses of almost $441 million. And that deficit represented almost 6% of our operating budget at the time. So obviously, that wasn't going to fly. You can't go out there with a budget that's got that big a deficit embedded in it. So the coming out of that phase in January, we sort of pivoted into our mitigation efforts. And on the next slide, I'll talk a little more to this one, just to kind of recap. Some of the things that we had laid out in terms of when we discussed in January, excuse me, February 6th, increases in revenue reflecting the new tuition offset grant. What we thought we can get for a special education billing to other districts. Use of utilization of part of our remaining Esser funds. Driving the revenue up to a little over $429 million when we got together a couple of weeks ago. Likewise, we had some estimates around what we thought we can eliminate on the expense side. Taking the estimate of expenses from $441 million down to about $431 million over that timeframe. In the intervening couple of weeks, really no change in the revenue over that timeframe. But we did note a couple of things in the expenses that I want to kind of call out for you. And the first one is, we did add back the cost of the central office temporary relocation to the central office eliminations. That's why you're seeing that figure go from about 2.0, just over the $3 million down to 2.2 million. As we went through our second round budget development meetings with the schools in February, we found the need to add back a couple of budgeted items that had been originally cut. And we're going to talk about that in a little more detail on the next slide. But that actually worked against us. That meant we were adding back into the budget about $400,000. And then the last piece is that from we, when we kind of snapped the line on, on people that were here in December, up until when we started finally rolling out the final summary of the budget toward the end of February, the turnover that we had experienced during that timeframe generated about another 1.2 million in savings. And what that means is that the outgoing salaries of those individuals versus what we were typically budgeted for a replacement for that role wound up being about $1.2 million higher in aggregate. So that translates into a reduction of about 1.2 million. And so you'll see now, we're at a difference of, we're down to a total expenses estimated of 431.4. And that remaining gap that's called out at the top of the page is really the expense task that we've built into next year's budget calculation. So in the resolution that was in the motion tonight, really what we're saying is, once we build in that budget task of that $1,975,567, it'll move the revenue and the expenses to the same number of the 429,382,852. And that's why we're asking for the, the number that we're asking to be approved tonight. And then on the next couple of pages, I, there's just some additional detail that we thought the board might be interested in. You know, in terms of what got added back as a result of those February second round meetings. You'll see in some cases, they were full FTEs. In some cases, they were partial FTEs and the associated cost of those positions. We had inadvertently cut a line that wasn't intended to be cut at Sanchez in instructional improvements and instructional supplies. We put that back in. And then we inadvertently had missed at Ross and as a, for instance, a copier maintenance. That's our leasing cost of about $9,000. So add all that back up. That's how you get to the $411,000 that I had shown being added back into the budget on the prior slide. So not a lot of money, but it kind of sort of ties together how we landed at the final number. And then the last piece. Superintendent, this might be you because you're kind of capturing the touch points with the school.
Yeah, and I think it's because there was a question, Christina, I think there was a question as to yes, touch points in schools, but specifically around school leadership. And so I wanted to kind of capture in addition to the expanded timeline, which we've actually linked into this PowerPoint. Right? These are the additional touch points with school leaders that have happened. You don't see here the community forums and those conversations, which of course leaders have had an opportunity to also participate in. But again, it was just in responding to a specific question that was, that was asked. I think we're going to pause here for questions. This was again, a very short presentation and Chief Penn just reviewed the, the latest updates.
All right, I'm looking to my colleagues. If you have questions, please raise your hand. If we can take the PowerPoint down, just so we can have a view of a have a different view. Looking to my colleague. Board Member Brody.
Mr. Walker had his hand up first.
My apologies. I couldn't see it in the corner. Board Member Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question earlier is about anticipated teacher shortages. At the end of all this, what do, what do we think is going to be the kind of net shortage of teachers, you know, below our ideal? Every year we have a certain number of you know, gaps. So what do you think it might be coming out of this?
Currently, we're at an 11% vacancy rate. And so we can kind of think from there. Chief Penn, if you can talk to the process that we went to where we were with the initial projection and how we've kind of adjusted it?
Yeah, thanks Superintendent. That's exactly right. If you look at all the vacant positions that we have across the district right now, we're at about an 11% vacancy rate. And when we initially put together the budget in January, we had assumed a vacancy rate for next year of 4%. We moved up that number to 6% in terms of anticipated vacancies for next year. I mean, of course, we love to see no vacancies and have full staffing for, for our students. But given the current state of the labor market, I don't think that's realistic to assume that we're going to get down to that level. And I think, you know, even moving from 11% down to 6% will be challenging, frankly, in the market that we're operating in right now. But that's what's embedded in the budget as it stands today.
Okay, thank you. Would you just happen to what like numbers, like 250 or something like that or roughly?
I know there was a list of vacancies that went out to the board earlier today.
Okay.
I honestly have to go back into that to just extract the number of teachers that are on there, but I can do that after the call and share that with Christina to share around.
I get you, but the, but that, that list would, that incorporates the vacancies you're thinking about?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right. I got you. Thank you.
Board Member Brody.
Thank you. So in regards to, first, I do want to say that I've, I, I'm impressed with our community because I've never seen so many people call me about budget stuff. So one of the things I want to lift and maybe, I don't know if this is for a superintendent in your leadership or the board leadership, that most people were disappointed that tonight we did not have public comment the night that we're voting on a budget. So if we could make a note of that that we're voting on, normally when we vote on items, we have public comment, usually workshops and that sort of thing. You know, do not, and they're used to that. So that was a huge complaint from the community. But do we know, my first question is, do we know in regards to, I expressed that I was in a parent meeting and there were many SGCs that were not feeling as if they were a part of the budget process. They felt that they were just looked to for a signature to pass on to central office leadership to say, yep, my SGC signed off on a budget. So to date, do we know how many of our schools actually signed off on the budget?
Dr. Nagron can give some specifics, Ms. Brody. I know that we've had this conversation before and we've circled back with not only the executive directors who oversee our school, our schools, but also our school leaders. And so Dr. Nagron specifically went back to take note.
So good evening, everybody. Specifically at the last budget meeting, when information was presented back to the schools, the schools did express that they wanted to have another round of school budget meetings to make sure that they had full understanding of where the budget stood, so that they could have more informed conversations with their SGCs. So at that point, all of the schools were tasked to make sure that they continue the dialogue with their schools to keep them updated on the progress of their budgets as they related to was, was already included in what was under discussion as possible cuts or needs that were needed to be expressed for 2324. We also reiterated at that point that it was crucial that again, they obtain dates and the standard budget sign off forms that are requested from all of the SGCs to document, right, that the conversations have been ongoing and that the information that they were receiving as leaders was being turnkey to their SGCs. We also wanted to reiterate again that it was to account for the conversations and the transparencies. Because I know at some point, there were some questions related to, does the signature mean that we are in agreement or not in agreement? We reiterated again that it's about transparency as to where they are in their budget. And if there were anything that they wanted to articulate to make sure that they could also put a note as part of the sign off form that they were going to then be submitted to the Office of School Leadership.
And we have all those back.
So at this point, I believe Chief Blackberg is also here. That is the office that collects the sign off sheets. So Dr. Chief Blackberg.
Thank you, Dr. Nagron. So as of today, we have received, and as Dr. Nagron shared, we have received some sign off forms that shared. We've reviewed it. We've received it. Our signature is not to denote agreement. Currently, we have two schools where we have not received those forms, but all other schools have provided the forms as well as the date that those signatures occurred.
Thank you. Could I go to the next question or how did we want to?
Yeah, I don't see any other hands. So the floor is yours.
Okay, I'll definitely express that is disheartening to have a budget when, and, and, and trust me, when I mention a unified arts, at first I want to say I appreciate the data that was given to me in regards to the unified arts and what schools are funded for all or, you know, just show what schools for 2023-24 is funded for unified arts. But for us to even consider a budget that does not have fully unified arts across the board, for me, that's a hard one for me. And not just because a kid needs to go to music, a kid deserves the right to express themselves in arts, but just for what that actually means in the body, in the brain, the connectedness even to school, to the curriculum, that those things do that we just say, oh, we, we're just not funding artists or music. It's so much more than that, which lends to achievement. But I don't see that our budget, it doesn't reflect that its value. I was impressed to see a lot of schools with music and art, but I noticed that I thought li- librarian or media, library media specialist, I thought that was a part of unified arts, but by me asking for the list, I don't even see that even mentioned. So I'm, I'm assuming at this point, we're not even considered, considering media, media, media specialist or a librarian as a part of unified arts. Because we know when we tour our schools, we see many empty unused libraries and that, that is something is, is very very hard to see. But I do want to ask the question. In the budget, do we have a line item for our commitment, or maybe we don't have a commitment, right? But do we have a line item for Hartford Public Schools engaging with the historically black colleges and universities for recruitment? Is that something we specify in our budget?
That is part of our talent office budget? And it's also, although we're not talking about Esser allocations, it's also funds that were funds specifically allotted to that under, under Esser as part of our recruitment strategy.
So we have that for 2324?
We have a line item for recruitment in our talent office. Yes.
Yeah, I'm not speaking of recruitment in general. I'm speaking of specific recruitment to HBCUs.
Chief Penn, I'm not sure how the detail shows up in Allevue, but when we do our allocations, each department has their own very specific departmental budget. And so in this case, historically, black colleges and universities and other entities are part of that allocation.
Correct.
Okay, because I seen a comment from our chairman, not the chair of the meeting, Mr. Johnson, from our chair Phil Regard, that that's not appropriate. I don't know if he's saying my comment or question isn't inappropriate. So I'll make it clear as to why I'm asking the question. I'm asking the question because we know how important, I know how important it was to have teachers that look like me because it made, I can't even express in words the, the difference that it makes. I think everyone here understands that, like, that's not something I'm teaching. That's something we all absolutely know. I know we've made many, many efforts in recruiting in many places, but we've never specifically discussed a specific relationship building with HBCUs prior to you, Madam Superintendent. We did have some discuss, well, not we, because I wasn't a part of that we, but the board at the time did have some efforts they were trying to do. It was a woman and I cannot remember her name, but she, she always called to task. She's constant at like NAACP meetings, you know, wanting to do that. I believe she put something on that we actually participated in. But I'm saying for us as a school district, if we're saying we know how important it is to get students to see teachers that look like them, to have a more diverse teaching staff. If we could turn the line item from being just recruitment to possibly finally being HBCU recruitment. That's my question, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Chair for tonight. So I didn't know if anyone else had anything.
Thank you for that. Are there any other questions? Any other questions? Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Yes, can, can you hear me?
We certainly can.
Yeah, and I apologize for any background noise you may hear. So I just want to clarify my, my question. While I do think Board Member Brody's question around HBCU recruitment is a much needed discussion. My comment around not appropriate is when we're taking a look at an aggregate budget here, I think Superintendent, you alluded to this, right? This falls under talent management. And I know we have a strategy in place to actually recruit. So I just want to make sure that I clarify my comment, not necessarily that the discussion is not appropriate. But I think when we're taking a look at this budget, I think it does fall under the talent management budget line item. And maybe that's more appropriate to have a more in-depth conversation about that kind of department budget, not necessarily the overall district budget that we're talking about here today.
Thank you for your, your comment. Are there any other questions regarding the budget?
Not a comment, but, but not a question, but a comment to definitely say. If I, if I have the opportunity and probably at every opportunity, it might not fit everyone's description of when it, when the question should be asked. But we're talking about no one, number one, no one else even had questions. So it's not like someone's waiting to ask a question and I'm asking a question about our commitment to recruiting black teachers. So it might not seem appropriate to everyone, but it definitely seemed appropriate to me.
All right. Any other questions regarding the budget? Any other questions regarding the budget? Well, I mean, I do have a final question here. And again, forgive me, I've had dental and oral work today, so my you know, it is what it is at this point, but to Board Member Brody's point, I do receive an ample amount of phone calls regarding the transparency of our budget and, you know, folk's participation. And I also believe that Chief Blackbird, you know, expressed the process, but can we just elaborate for the folks that are watching that we have been transparent in this process? Dr. Superintendent, do you mind just reiterating the steps of the workshops and the the various SGCs that we have communicated with? Do you mind just elaborating that just really quickly before we take our vote?
Sure, I can kind of give a, a general overview and, and we did also link in there the entire timeline. And so we've had various touch points. School Governance Council members did take part in budget community forum on the 10th of, of November as well as a training with SGC chairpersons for Allevue, which is the, the cloud-based system that we use to kind of monitor allocations and spending. And so we also had several community forums that we hosted, which were not only widely promoted, but we thought, we thought well-attended on December 13th and on February 28th. With regard to, well, I alluded earlier to the building principles because that was another question that was asked last time we were together. And we had our recent, our most recent forum, Oh Keep Me Honest Team, last Monday, last Tuesday. Now the days are blurring.
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday was our last forum. And so we've had, we've had several. And I, you know, and I think we can continue to, to reflect on process. And I think this is what Ms. Brody, you spoke about earlier. And so those conversations we can continue to have. But I do believe that we've had several touch points in our efforts to educate our community, not only as to the process, but the actual resource allocation.
Board Member Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent, would you provide me with the, the list of community conversations and the number of people who attended? Because I do think
Cuz I do think we should, we should just be transparent about that, so people can just can see. Um you get the point.
Sure, um and we can get that to you. Um our communications team will work with Ms. Santiago.
Okay, thank you.
And just another process, process um comment, you know, when when we have the community forums, one of the things that um we do is we we compile all the questions and we also make sure that we have those available um on the website, um so that, right, it it's a kinda a running record um of what we have heard um throughout the conversations.
Uh is that a new hand or an old hand?
Was, were the community um forums, were they all virtual?
Correct.
See, that that is, that's part of what um folks have been saying, what what they're wanting more of, or an opportunity to do, is to engage, like they ask a question, you're there, so maybe um in person, um I'm thinking at least engaging in person, um at least that's what they're looking to have a dialogue between between the community and yourself or your staff. But when it's in the forum sense, it's like a question is being um asked of someone, it's online, so it's not really personable in that way. Um so that is some other feedback um um that, you know, was given.
I I appreciate the feedback. I think we, you know, we can, moving forward, we can think of perhaps a hybrid approach. I'm trying to reflect back at the pre-COVID days that we would do three, four forums, and you know, the most we would have in one night were five people showing up. Um and in some cases, there would be, right, two people and the rest were were staff. And so compared to, I think in the last one that we had, we had over forty attendees. And so I think, right, maybe a a collection, just a combination of both, Ms. Brody, right, in person and um hybrid as well.
All right, this is my final time asking for any other questions before we uh ask your question for a vote.
Uh Board Member Johnson, one thing I did wanna, um it might be obvious, but I just wanna state that um the uh the budget hearing um was uh in in person, but the others were um virtual. Just wanted to clarify that, cuz it wasn't a question, but I just wanted to clarify for for the community.
Thank you. Board Member Frank.
Good evening, thank you so much. Um two things, one, I wanted to say um that as a black certified teacher in Connecticut, um or just in general, pretty much, it's very important um to be in the presence of children who look like you, and also to have children who look like you, see individuals teaching them. So I'm looking forward to the conversation um when the time, you know, time allows, where we can dialogue about um recruitment from H B C U's and such. The question that I do have is to actually to Chief Blackbird with regards to the two schools who did not respond um with regards to the proposed budget, will there be any follow-up with them? Um will there be, you know, dialogue with them to see why they did not respond, or what perhaps happened, and you know, what they'd like to see?
Thank you, um Board Member Daristel Ledger. Yes, myself and Dr. Nagro, we will be following up with those two schools. Um it was not a lack of outreach to the schools. We did have, as Dr. Nagro shared, I was a part of those budget meetings that occurred after um the last session that we had. So we will be following up, uh even today, myself and Dr. Nagro, we were still doing outreach to those two schools, so we are aware, and uh we'll be continuing to work on that together.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, not seeing any other questions or any hands raised?
Sorry, I had a question uh here.
Oh, okay.
That's okay, it's yellow, I never changed the color. Um so uh just a quick follow-up on that, in terms of the two schools that didn't necessarily give feedback. Um it, was it a scheduling uh issue? I I just kinda wanna understand that a little more, um you know, if you can, maybe I missed it, but I'm 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 not sure, I'm clear why why there wasn't wasn't feedback from those two schools.
Dr. Nagro, okay.
Yes, Chief Blackbird, I can speak about one of the particular schools. One was more related to updates in total amount of figures with all of the changes. And um they wanted to have more um confirmation around the dollar amount based on um the follow-up um changes that were made after the second conversation. Um so it was related to that. Um the the copy of the sheet, right, that we provide as part of the budget book uh had been already provided, but they were looking for an additional figure. Um once we unpacked that, we were able to send it out. Um but that was very late, so the hope will be that um that building leader is gonna be able to circle back to their S G C um to provide those those numbers.
Thank you. And the other school, it was a scheduling piece, so we'll be working with them to get that done as quickly as possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Board Member Bello, finally, any other questions? If there's a hand in on this, and please let me know. All right, the motion on the floor that the Hartford Board of Education adopts fiscal year two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four itemized estimate of expenditures in the amount of four hundred twenty-nine million three hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars effective July first, two thousand and twenty-three. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays?
Nay.
Any abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion moves, congratulations. Now we'll move into our workshop. Uh tonight's topic is the multi-tiered system of supports. And uh we're gonna throw it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, let me just shift here, um screens. And I will be tagging in our Dr. Nagro. Let me just do a quick overview, if you can uh shift to the next slide, please. Uh it does look like it's a very long agenda, uh but it's because it's compartmentalized. We are gonna provide an overview of the multi-tiered system of support model and some of the processes. Um specifically, um hoping to have you all understand what we call the academic side of uh this tiered supports and the behavioral side of the tiers. Um and then also share how we're um the practices for supporting students with uh the highest level of needs um and our social and emotional needs. Uh and then also thinking about where we currently are as we as we forecast ahead, specifically around the challenges to making sure that we're implementing uh effective behavioral supports, and we're we're doing that with fidelity. There are some challenges for us uh in doing that. Um and then we wanna share high-impact strategies of focus for uh for next year. And then saving a little bit of time for some questions. If we go to the next slide, it's again trying to anchor us on um the work, the priorities, and how um tonight's presentation is aligned to uh not only the priorities, the four priorities, but some of the investments as it relates to these um tiered systems of supports are funded through uh our S R funds specifically to align to the must-wins that were identified. And so um right, multi-tiered system of supports um is a, it's an instructional framework that provides holistic supports uh to meet student needs, so that right, every student can meet success. The process itself starts um with what we call on both, on both sides, right? There's a, there's an academic side, there's a behavioral, social, emotional side. Uh regardless of the side, uh the process does start with a universal screening of students to identify, specifically the students that need that additional level of support. And then once those students are identified, uh they are uh uh placed in uh to different tiers based on their level of need. And then the placements, the student progress is reviewed um every six to eight weeks to determine uh if one, there's, that's the appropriate placement. And um to determine if there has to be a shift either up a tier or or another intervention to be identified as part of that tier, or or going down in the tier, if you will. Um so we're gonna um get a little technical at the beginning, just cuz we wanna make sure that we have a a a universal understanding of what we're talking about, where we're referencing multi-tiered system of support. So Dr. Nagro, I'm gonna tag you in.
Thank you, Superintendent. So I wanted to begin tonight by um bringing up, right, the most common image of uh multi-tiered system of support, um also known as M T S S. And it's often this triangle that we use to represent um the entire framework. So what this is calling out here, it's the, as you see, uh the foundational work, which we call the universal approach, whether it be academic or whether it be behavioral, right, you wanna have um instruction that is being offered to all students um to make sure that e- everyone has access, whether that is for the academic um piece, or whether that be for the behavioral or social, emotional um needs. So that is what we we often refer to as tier one, right? Um from there is what we call um more targeted support. So if a child is not responding to to that universal foundational approach, then we would be providing tier two. That is what we will call more targeted support, often being provided in small group. And then when that also is um indicating that the child child requires more, again, whether we're talking about academic or behavioral, social, and emotional, that's when we start referencing more intense level of support, which we often refer to as tier threes. So I wanted to begin by just kinda lifting, like the language of what we mean when we're talking about tier one, again, universal approach. Everybody gets it, no matter what, and then tier two, meaning more targeted, tier three, be more intense. Um and then I'm going to um kinda walk you as to how it is that all of this process comes together as it relates to these tiers and levels of needs. So in the next slide, I will say that M T S S um as a framework, as an approach, is as good. And what it means good would be at a point when we have highly effective functioning teams. And in in Hartford Public Schools, our framework entails one, what we refer to as an M T S S team. That is the team at the school level, right, that is reviewing data. That is a team that is going to be creating intervention plans. That is a team, at the end of the day, that is going to be monitoring, number one, who are the students that are in need of additional support? So meaning that we're gonna look at the universal screener to actually get the data that is saying this student is in need of additional support, right? So that we're able to kick it over as a child in need of tier two. And often in those teams, they are made up of building leadership. Right, often you have either the principal or the assistant principal part of that team. You definitely have school social workers that are part of that team and or school counselors. This is where you would see the nurses being part of that team, teacher leaders, resource teachers, or interventionists. Um often, you would include um special education teachers or or T S L teachers, cuz you'll be bringing them in for that level of expertise, because again, you're going back to a universal screener to try to identify, yes, this child indeed is in need of more support. So M T S S team becomes key. Another team that um comes into play would be what we refer refer to as our ACE team. Right, this will be, for example, our attendance team or culture and climate team, and our engagement teams. These are the teams that are dealing more, again, as it relates to attendance. How, who are the kids that are in need of more engagement? And what is that strategy going to look like uh as it pertains to, how am I gonna hook the kid? We're making sure that they're coming into school, right? How am I hooking up um the family with support around making sure that they come to school? This will also be the team, for example, that we would have data to say when we look at behavioral, it looks, right, that there's there's some needs here. They're not responding to the universal approach, clearly they're in need of more. So that is where we will be tapping into um individuals like our uh B Ts, S C Ss, right? Social workers, counselors, again, all all the personnel that will tend to support our behavioral and social emotional needs. And maybe um referrals to interventions related to those S E L needs. Also wanted to flag that at the school level, we also have gray level and cantinaria teams. And although these teams are often are talking about more academic academic pieces, they come into place at the M T S S team, because when we are discussing a particular student need, we could be either academic, it could be behavioral, it could be social, emotional. And those teams, teachers become key, because they see, again, the student um in the in the classroom, right? So it becomes key to make sure that these teams are highly effective and functioning with all of the uh pieces around being able to look at a universal screener, being able to identify students that would be in need of more support. In the next slide, I wanted to give you an idea of how it is that it plays out on the academic side. So for example, on the academic side, if we are talking about um what is available to all students? Well, what is available to all students in our tier one would be the core content curriculum that we offer our kiddos, right? So that would be what is our approach to the way that we are teaching or um or content around uh literacy, math, science, right, all of our content areas. There's a core curriculum, and more and more, we've been going and and making sure that we are being, bringing the best um instructional materials to be able to support our teachers. Um instructional materials to be able to support our teachers around the teach the teaching practices, right? That have been articulated under the work that we've done around the instructional vision to get us again to make sure that our kids are. Um graduating, right? Realizing our portrait of the graduate. A lot of this work in tier one is also done in collaboration, for example, with our Department of. Uh students with special needs and also with our multilingual learners. Because we wanna make sure that at the tier one, we are creating access for all students. Right? And making sure that that tier one um is enough to to catch. The majority of our students. And also the level of collaboration that continues to uh happen within our uh. For example, office of academics with our content directors and our curriculum experts. When we know that a child is not responding to the universal screener. And for example, on the literacy side, we use iReady, which you often hear me speak about those. When I'm giving you the updates related to how our kids are performing, right? There's a universal um screener that we use. In iReady for grades um K five. And we use um Reading Plus as a universal screener in six twelve. And out of those screeners, we're able to see, hey, how are the students performing? Who clearly, based on the data, is in need of more? Right? And now when that happens, we then kick it into tier two. And for example, tier two could be, and you could observe it in different ways. It might mean that you walk into a class and there may be a small group. Because the teacher now has has been armed with the data that is speaking about. The level of need that that child has specific in reading. Or it could be specific in math, and then they do a small group to deliver targeted instruction. It could also mean we do utilize programs, right? Like iReady and Reading Plus. But I wanna highlight that it is about the expertise. That the teacher brings to be able to deliver um the tier two intervention. And that, yes, we do utilize computerized programs, but we are not solely um. Banking on only that as an intervention because we need to lift, right, the expertise of a teacher to be able to facilitate that. We um then when kids are um continuing to need more and more support. There are other things that we put and we make available um to them and we continue to look. For how else we can support because we we know they need more. The MTSS team, then they have to go back and monitor, right? How is the performance of the child? Do they continue to need more? And if they need more, that is when we kick it over to level tier three. And that is more individualized interventions. That's when you start seeing more uh plans that are drafted. To meet the needs, um that are coming out of those screeners um to target the students. I wanna reiterate, these plans that I'm speaking about, these interventions that I'm speaking about. This has nothing to do with special ed. This is all general ed. And the interventions that need to be afforded, right? To make sure that we are responding um to the needs. Now, when um there's no response, right, and it's ongoing, that is often when you start getting to um. Uh referrals for special education and whatnot. But again, I wanna uh specify, this is all. Um special education. I wanna shift now, this was all academic, but but I wanna shift to the sort behavioral and social emotional side. Because often when I'm in front of you, I am talking a lot about the academics and I wanna be able to to um. Hone in on the social emotional um learning needs. So in the next slide, right, we all know that there has been an uptick. Right of the needs, right, that we see um our student exhibiting, especially after um the pandemic. And not just specific to Hartford, um not just to um the districts in our state, but like nationally, right? So we see here that about um eighty-four percent of the public schools would agree. Right? That there has been um um a negative impact, right, that came from the pandemic on our students. And I did link um the source there later if you wanna take a look at it. But again, we we all all agree is on an uptick. Um even for us, more at the local level. Like we have seen an increase in the um number of office discipline referrals. Right? When we're constantly looking and assessing that data, we have seen an increase of thirteen point five. When we look at last year compared to where we are now. And even when we look at our suspension in our expulsions, we're also seeing an uptick of about um two point four. Right? So clearly, um there is a lot of need. And I wanted to share with you. How it is, what it is that these things look like, again, going back to the triangle as it relates to the behavioral and social emotional side. So on the next slide, I wanted um unpack for you a little bit about. What is it that we offer as a tier one? Again, what is universal that we offer to all of our children, right? So a lot here um pertains again, speaking about um. You heard me speak about curriculum on the academic side. I also wanna speak about curriculum on the social emotional side. Um because there has been some of the investments that we have made um over the years. So for example. On the um elementary side, we do utilize um second steps. Um second steps is provided primarily to um pre-K. And second steps, it's more about teaching children around their interpersonal skills. Teaching them about conflict resolution. At the early grade, it's more about, you know, kids realizing and being able to identify like their emotions. And then as you progress through um the elementary years, it's about. Okay, I know I'm having this emotion. How do I manage that emotion? And then in the later grades, it's more about. Then I know I have this emotion, how can I apply it, right? As I'm dealing with with others. So that is a little bit about what second steps, um what that curriculum offers. Um that curriculum, we have it again, as I mentioned, uh pre-K eight. And then at the secondary level, we do bring in School Connects, right? And School Connects, it's more about. Um more about how do uh we help students. Um work and resolve um conflict, right? So a lot of the curriculum is about that. But it's also about how do they uh resolve conflict, not only with their peers, but also with adults. Right? Because we know these are um older students. Part of that curriculum also um deals with study skills. You know, their interests. So all of that is embedded into the curriculum that we bring um into. The high school level, School Connects. The way that that is delivered. Often you will find, for example, second steps will be delivered more during that morning meeting. That you see as part of the elementary um schedule. At the middle and high school level, you see a more around the advisory block or the seminar block. Right? So these are the things that we offer um to all of our students. That is the universal tier one. Of course, code of conduct is more about um identifying what are the expectations. Um what are, you know, consequences that 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 are there in terms of the code of conduct and what we expect. Um but more around, wanted to lift restorative practices and positive behavioral intervention supports. As you know, these have been the two um sort of um. Frameworks that we adopt across the entire district as the way that we approach behavior. And I wanna distinguish be between programs. Because often some people hear like PBIS and they think it's like a program that you buy, you deliver. No, all of these things, whether you're talking about restorative practices or you're talking about PBIS. Really, what we're talking about is, you know, do we understand behavior? Do we understand the developmental stages of behavioral that children come in with? Because you know, right, all of all of us who are parents, we know there's a big difference, right? With a uh an elementary student and and we all live right the middle grades. And then um the high school stage, right? They're very different developmentally, so. Do we understand behavior? Do we understand how to respond um to their behavior? Do we also like teach the students the clear expectations? And again, how to handle um. All of those pieces. And uh for this work, you know, for example, we partner way back with like. Um Joe Brummer, I remember when I entered um the district, that's what we were working with, right? Um from there, then we progressed to the work that we've been doing with the International Institute for Restorative Practices. Right? And restorative practice is all about um this concept of. Do we understand that the actions um that we've taken and how our actions impact the community? And sometimes how the actions might cause harm and how do we repair harm? Um so that we can um give back to the community. So all of this is like tier one, right? But we know, again, like academic, sometimes not all students will respond to tier one. Because they are in need of more intervention. So there, that is where we start tapping into our tier two supports. So you will see things like small group interventions. Um that often get delivered either by social workers or. Or school counselors sometimes might come into play. There are a lot of investments, right, that you have approved. Uh where we brought in additional social workers, right? Where we were able to bring in and expand, for example, on our SESs, right? These are all the resources that tap into our tier two interventions. So they can support structures like check-in, check-ups, small groups that a social worker might have. Working around a particular behavior that a child needs more support. But sometimes, um. A- and again, all the business that we do related to like attendance, right? Wanna make sure I'm not forgetting that piece. And the referrals that we make to outside agencies. But we also know that sometimes that's not enough. And the data is telling us the child requires more. So just like in academics, we have to go into more. Um intense support. So that is where we start going into tier three supports. Those are things where we're talking about more like individual interventions that a child might uh require. Right? So that is where we're talking about a child may require a functional behavioral assessment, an FBA. If you often hear that term. Or a child is in need of a behavioral intervention plan. So that is where everybody rallies behind what is exactly the root problem. And what kind of a plan can we put in place to support, right? And and again, I wanna call it almost like a uh. Like a wraparound because everybody has to come in, right? Sometimes it might need something that we might need like the nurse to kind of help us really think about what is it that the child needs. Sometimes it might be like the expertise of the social worker or uh more of the expert expertise of someone else. More intensely, right? You know, we have partnered with Effective School Solutions. These are clinicians, right, with a certain level of expertise. That we um bring in to support that tier three um level of need. So again, this is how we walk through tier one, tier two, tier three. But I wanna highlight. All of it is as good as that MTSS team is in utilizing the structure. Use utilizing the systems to be able to move through all um. The data that's in front of them to respond timely to that level of need. Um in the next slide, I wanted to share with you a little more about. With the optics that we see again around the behavior and the social emotional side. What are some of the things that we do, right? So here, for example, I wanted to hone in on. You've you've heard us all all year long talk about, you know, student engagement, chronic absence, tears on. Right? Well, what is it that we do once we know that a kid is moving on to tier two or tier three? And here, yes, right, that accounts for the communication that goes with the home, the standard, like the parent letters, the phone calls that are made. Uh but also it means the home visits, right, that take take place as part of that ACE team, people going out. Um and the investment that has been made there. So even people can do those visits after hours, right? When we know parents might be home. Also around um meetings that take place. Often engaging the parent, right? We leverage the parent a lot in MTSS. Because we we need to hear from the parent. Who knows the child best than the parent? So we wanna hear from the parent. We wanna hear from the teacher. Um because they become key, right, in fully understanding the entire need um of the child. Um also, often it might be things like the health centers. Right? Sometimes it's more around um medical support that a child might need. Sometime, hey, we didn't know all the child leader was um in ITAS, right, or something like that. So we do leverage our school-based health centers. Um and I lifted for you where those are located right now in in HPS. So we have one at Hartford High, one at Belize, one at MD Fox. Um and we also have mental health licensed clinicians um that are distributed throughout. Sometimes it might mean you might hear um things like um C-Bits. And again, those are more um more like expert um practices. People that have been trained, like social workers, for example, to use that type of practice. So often we leverage them, right, for uh more um intense needs. Um maybe things like like therapy, right? But these are people that are more specialized to be able to support us. Um with that practice. You heard me speak about um ESS. I cannot thank you enough uh for the support that you have given to that contract in these um two years. Because uh we are grateful, right, that we have these clinicians to be able to support our most needy students. Um and and we're seeing great data um coming out of that partnership. Uh so again, that is um some of how we are responding. Uh in the next slide, I have a few more. Um I wanna also to lift um that we're grateful for the partners that we're able to leverage in this work. So uh through the Office of Family and Community Engagement. Um so thank you, Chief Blackbird, for all the work that you do um to help us to secure these partnerships, right? Uh we bring in uh mental health um supports that come into our schools. So here, for example, these include um The Village, um Charter Oak. Um Catholic Charities, Leo Clinic, and I gave you um some of the locations. Where these are currently located, right? Um also grateful for the collaboration that we have from Compass Youth Collaborative. The uh Peace Builders Program specific, right? They work with our youth um that is more like um in crisis and particularly like around the high school level. Seeing like a lot, right, things that are happening and. Uh I mean, you're aware, right, of what's happening in our community and um things that are like beyond our control. And these are times where we tap into peace builders, for example, to help us with these um. Situations, particularly in our in our high schools. So um. These are some of the ways that we respond. I also wanted to share with you that sometimes. Um in our, in the next slide, it might mean that we know there's a need. Right in from the communication that we gather with the family and with the team. And things that 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 we're not able to offer, but we are um. We are, we have intentionality, right, to make sure that we are connecting with the family. To be able to then make a referral to an outside agency. And when we make the referral, I wanna highlight that it isn't just like, hey, mom, that guardian. And when we make the referral, I want to highlight that it isn't just like, hey, mom, that guardian. Call this agency. Now, we we are grateful for the social workers. It's often them or other people that are literally like making sure that the parent, the guardian. Like has and on um the the appointment with this particular agency. To make sure that they initiate, right, um the initial contact to support the family, to make sure that they do um begin. Um to get connected with these outside agencies. I do want to um highlight for you. Yes, there are a lot of agencies, right, that are available to support our students. But but there's a lot of waiting list out there, right? So often that is what's um. Kind of slowing down the process because we might we might have a child that they need an agency, but again, everybody has a waiting list. Um but again, grateful again for the people that we have in-house, the partnerships that we have in-house. Our own staff that we have, as well as um the outside agencies that are always um willing to help us. Um so again, tier one, tier two, tier three, what it looks like, partners that we have, um what we're doing about it. But I also want to flag in the next slide, with everything, just like with academics, I always live for your challenges. I wanted for um to live for your challenges related to behavior and social emotional um needs of our students. So it's always one of these where, right, I might have all of these partners, right, that you saw. But then I also have to take into account the context of the school because every school is unique. Right? And we we try to make um the best match that we can. When it comes to trying to then connect a partner to that particular school context. So that sometimes, right, gets a little a little tricky. Um another one is that you know, right? The need, it's extremely high. It was already high, it's just higher. And sometimes we're we're not able to like keep up um with the need or with the resources um. Um that we have. And this is what we have to really think about. Um you know, how do we sustain this work? Process. And the reason why why I want to flag Esser is, you know, through Esser. Curriculum that we bought, right, those universal screeners that we bought, we bought through Esser. Um additional staffing that we brought in through Esser. For example, the additional social workers, the um ESS contract, right? Um the increases in our um partnerships with um community agencies. Right? A lot of those we did through Esser. So it's how do we sustain that? After we know, right, that those funds are going to be um leaving us and um. How do we continue to make sure that um? The structures that we currently have in place lend themselves to um the urgency of the needs. Um that we know that we are seeing in our in our students. So those are all um of the challenges. And also knowing that we want to approach, right, all behavior um with our commitment, right? In our approach to restore restorative practices. How do we balance that also? We're making sure that our schools are safe, that our children are safe. That our staff are safe. So, for example, in my world, part of the job, there are things that happen at schools. There's a code of conduct. Um it might mean that you have to send out to an expulsion hearing. I have to read it, I have to consider it, right? I have to, yes, I want to ensure that there are restorative practices. Um to make sure that the child, right, can restore harm, but there are some incidents that are beyond that. Right? There are some incidents that then um have to sign off and send to an expulsion hearing. Right? So it's always like balancing that. So those are some some of the challenges. And um the opportunities, because I always always tell you opportunities, the opportunities that I see. Um is that whether it's academic or whether it's behavioral, social, emotional. We have to make sure that our foundation is strong, right, going back to that triangle. Meaning that our tier one, whether academic, meaning that our curriculum has access that the kids can. Can get for all children, so that we can capture the bulk of our kids, so that it reduces the amount of kids. That are in need of a tier two and a tier three. And on the behavioral side, right? Getting better about our approach or mindset around behavior, so that we are armed. With the way that we respond to it, whether it be um leveraging, right? Practices and understanding around positive behavior approach, or whether it be restorative practices. So continuing to work around that mindset, because behavior is all about. Behavior is all about the interaction, right, that we have as humans. That's what it is. And getting better at that at that foundation. The reality is, the tier two and the tier three, they're never going to disappear, right? Even in best case scenarios, there's always going to be students that are going to need more support. Whether it be academic or behavior, but we have to ensure that our foundation is extremely strong. So I would say, the more attention we can pay, right, to continue to get better at what we do. Uh how we train our staff to be able to be solid um in these approaches, the better off we're going to be. Because we're going to be able to reduce um the number of students that are going to require tier two and tier three. That's a lot. Um I realized that a lot. I wanted to give you all of it and then pause. Um for questions that you might have.
All right, are there uh any questions? And help me see some hands if there are hands.
It's France Paus. I have a question.
Go for it, board member France Paus.
Thank you so much. Um and that was definitely quite a presentation, lots of information, lots of good. Information. I have a few questions. Um being an SCL person. Um a person who's very into um mindfulness, into um energy, into behaviors. Um with, you know, with students, with staff, what do you have in place for? Your staff, actually. This is great for students, but when you like. In with regards to holding space for students, but who is holding space for the staff? How are they being um cared for um in an SCL way? So that they can continue to do the work and not get burnt out, um not start to decompensate themselves.
That is a great question, and I'm glad that you lifted that, right? Especially now, like, it's almost like when when we are on in in an airplane, right, and we get. We get that the communication that says, in case of an emergency, right, make sure that you take care of yourself first. Before you go on to support others, same thing, right? We have to do better at the way that we are supporting our staff now, especially now that there's such a need. Um I know that we continue to try to do more and more through professional learning, which is very small. Um in our rest days to try to provide um approaches that we can use. Um to bring in balance, right, to our own lives um in in calmness. But I I have to be very honest and very transparent. I think often we are looking at our kids. And we have to do more for our adults. We do want to um. Talk about building that and continuing to build it, so that it's it's more. I think we we do some. But I'll be the the first one to say that we don't do enough. We build it in in everything that we do, every activity. Every meeting, right, we we try to always like often we say, begin with a circle. Check in, right? We always learn on about do a check-in. How are you walking in? It's a space to like get in touch with your emotions, just like we do with kids um or pausing, right? Um often you'll be like what we do, take a ball uh uh a pause to just like do an exercise around breathing. Just to to like get collected. But again, we have, we have to do more. We have to make an investment. I know that during COVID, we did, we did a lot. There was a huge investment around bringing in diff- different opportunities. Yoga, different events that we were offering, um and we have to get back to that. Superintendent, I know that you want to.
And I was, I was gonna uh say two things. One, you alluded to the fact that there um right with circling up, but. You know, during the monthly administrator, the Leadership Institute, that is something that um Dr. Nogron, your team is very, very mindful of, right? Creating um not only the activities, but modeling the practice that that we want to see. So in addition to the circling up, there are certain protocols, right, that that are implemented to show that sometimes, um right? Even if it's a five-minute protocol, um it's not only messaging, but it is uh creating that mental model. For 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 our leaders to then kind of turnkey and do that with with staff. The other thing that I wanted to raise is that um I I think from a leadership perspective. We have uh leaders across the entire continuum, right? Some leaders um are um have experience in. Um you know, their own uh journey with um say yoga, for example, or mindfulness practices. And so sometimes that shows up. In 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 how um right in the programs that they implement, and then others need additional uh support. Um we also uh have uh created opportunities for across all schools to have mindful uh mindfulness spaces. For students, but we've also uh continued to encourage our our leaders to do, to have mindfulness, uh reflection. Spaces for for our adults and um I know that in the last week, because I was in schools last week, and I know that. Two schools that I went to did have um chair massages um available in the schools. Um I don't know how many more than the two I visited, but I just thought that, oh, I've been to two buildings today and there are. Um chair massages going on for for staff. So um little things like that, uh France Paus, but um. Absolutely opportunity and space for us to do more.
Not much. Any other questions? And forgive me if I can just you hop in.
Hi, it's Kim. I have a question.
Go ahead, board member Oliver.
Thank you. Um thank you for the presentation. It was uh very comprehensive. Um and a good update from the information that you shared with us previous. Um I have. Well, I I have two questions. They're quick, I promise. The first one is on multilingual learners. I know you put it in. Um tier one, and it was about the collaboration with the State Department. Um can you just share a quick example of what that looks like in terms of student experience? So in other words, you're collaborating with the State Department, but how does that then show up for the students? You know, on on a like an average, just as an example.
So board member, um I'm sorry, I meant to say that the collaboration, right, within the Office of Academics. Right? I have a director of multilingual services. Just like I have also working closely with the Assistant Superintendent of Student um Supports and People Services. So what happens is all the work that is done in the Office of Academics. When we are building, which is not often the case in other districts, when we are building, we are building together. Because often what happens is that you build for the regular mainstream. And then you try as an afterthought, oh, how is this going to work for the special education student? How is this going to work for the multilingual learner? And I can tell you that in the time that I've been now with here in Hartford. From day one, right, I walked in saying, no, everything that we build is for all students. So we build with that intentionality, um and they're always at the table, so that the lens is always. Is it accessible to all, right? And then from there, they also serve as that level of expertise. To then be able to inform, then what else do we need when a child is in need of more? So in the multilingual learner world, right? It would be treated like any other regular education student. Um if they're in need of additional support. Um they would get the support, whether they need extra support, reading or math, as it relates to like an intervention. That is what would happen. But in terms of services, right, I want to distinguish from the services. The services, again, is what they would get as being identified as a multilingual learner. That is just like a given, right, that would have to be provided.
That's great. Thank you for that clarification. That's extremely helpful, and it's actually wonderful to hear. It's embedded in our larger work. Um which I think is critically important. Um the second one, and I guess maybe this might be more of of a comment. Um really appreciate um you sharing the challenges in terms of the balance between safety for, you know, all. And also in terms of how to be supportive of students, whether it's through restorative practices, et cetera. And one of the the reasons I want to lift that was because fortunately not our district, but I'm aware of. Um a child attending a different district who had disruptive behavior and it became an outside suspension. And one of the things that I wondered about in that is, is we know for. You know, somewhat valid reasons why um usually you have to take a a full look. At what's going on with the child to really determine what makes sense for that child. Um obviously, I don't have that information, so on the face of it, it was like, oh, disruptive behavior, outside suspension. But to your point. It's it's a place where our children, especially um children of color and of course, children in poverty. Um is very quick for those type of um um actions. And unfortunately, labels to be put on our children. So I really appreciate you speaking to that balance and. Uh maybe for another time could really talk through unpacking perhaps what you envision here in terms of. Ensuring that whether it's through certain processes, um et cetera, to to make sure that that balance is. Something that's um a non-negotiable throughout and across in terms of a consistent way across schools. So again, I think that was more of a comment, but I really appreciate you lifting that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I I do have a um a comment in response to your comment, Ms. Oliver, only because I don't know that we've had the conversation. Uh with this entire group, but there has been um conversation about the code of conduct. And the need to um do a step back and review the code of conduct and um revise and and update the code of conduct. Um given that um it it warrants um the application of inequity, specifically a racial equity lens. And so that's that's work that is um gonna come and and um board member. Uh Johnson is aware of of that, and I believe some conversations have started at the at the policy uh committee.
Thank you. I look forward to that. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Uh ladies and gentlemen, it is uh seven PM. And uh we are scheduled for, I believe, a ninety-minute meeting. I see two hands. And uh I want to recognize those hands and uh say that these are our last two comments uh on this uh. On this topic. So um board member Brody and board board member France Paus, uh you all will have the last two comments.
Thank you, Dr. Nogron. This is a lot um to think about, right? Um you you said what you presented on um this evening was for high school students.
Uh can you repeat that question again?
You said what you presented on this evening was for high school students?
No, this was uh comprehensive.
Okay, maybe it was a, maybe it was just a portion of it that you uh mentioned was for high school students. But I had a one question in particular to how we look at data. Um of our eighth graders and how we plan strategically with care. knowing that they'll, for, well, for the eighth graders that aren't in like a six through twelve school, that are transitioning to somewhere else with us, um, in how that looks and how we can do that, um, to get ahead of it, um, for high school, for that ninth grade.
I'm excited to share that that is some of the work that we're doing to make sure that we're starting to have those intentional conversations, right, between like our feeder patterns, so that, right, we already have the data on the students. We already know their needs, so we should be taking advantage before they even land in the ninth grade. So we want to make sure that we're doing more and more, um, to support what that transition will be like.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board member, uh, Francois.
Thank you so much, and, um, I just, I have a question with regards to implicit bias. Um, is there work, are you considering implicit bias? And is there work being done with that to address that? Because, um, I know that, um, and, and studies show that when a implicit bias is addressed, it does reduce, um, you know, labeling and certain behaviors that may seem, that may appear as problematic. Um, it reduces that number so that, you know, the real issues can be dealt with. So I, I, I'm wondering if you're, you know, in, you know, um, including that and implementing that with, you know, with your staff as well?
That, uh, Dr. Negron, I can, I can speak to that, and the answer to that is that it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing process. We have done, um, some, we've had conversations with staff, um, even, uh, deeper conversations at the, at the leadership level with our, with our school leaders around book studies. And we find that we have to just continue to pull, pull the thread, if you will. Um, not only specifically focused in professional development, but you know, as how it shows up, right, in, in all spaces and even all interactions with, not just behavior interactions, other interactions as well. Uh, this is why I think it's so important for us to, um, have the step back around the code of conduct and also, uh, you know, determine what implications exist, not only in policy, but also, right, programmatically. Um, I, I, I'm of the belief that those are not a one and done conversations, right? It's, it's a journey that we all, we all have to engage in and that we're all at very different places of the continuum on. Um, so I appreciate you for lifting the question and, um, also work that has to continue.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we have done a lot and we have heard a lot this evening. In my speaking, has it gotten better in these last two hours? So that means the noble cane is wearing off. Uh, I would like to thank, um, my board members for being on. I also would like to thank our amazing staff at Harper, Hartford Public Schools. And also just want to lift and elevate that everything that we do on this board is public and can be seen and can be viewed and can be commented on. Um, and, uh, I want to thank each and, each and every one of you for being on tonight, all of our viewers. This will conclude, this will conclude our, uh, our workshop and special meeting, thank you.
Thank you, good night.